Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Gosh, it booms. Welcome to you all here. I hope you're all at the right place at the right time. Today is Wednesday the 6th of July, so if you think it's a different date, you've got it wrong. So, welcome to everybody who's here today. Obviously, we've got some aldermen here and some other guests, and it's very nice to see you all. And we'll kick off. Obviously, with the agenda being reasonably light, I say reasonably, we're probably unlikely, therefore, that we'll go as long as needing to have a tea break, because it may well be that we'll be finished before the tea break. But that is up to you, ladies and gentlemen. I'll leave it up to you. Yes, saving money, good plan. I'll open with a prayer then, please. Creator and sustainer of all things and all people, you are the source of wisdom and light. Enlighten our minds to receive your guidance, so that you may lead us into true wisdom. May all that we say and do in the service of the county, whether as elected member or as officer, be in accordance with your will and for the good of your people. Amen. The standard procedures. Evacuation procedure: in the event of having to evacuate the council chamber, would everyone leave by one of the two exits at the rear of the chamber? I feel like a bit of an air hostess. Officers will be on hand to assist with people with disabilities. Mobile phones, all right? Do it yourself. May I ask all members who have mobile phones with them to ensure that they are switched off so they will not disturb the meeting? Glad that one's on there. Thank you very much. So, agenda item number one is chairman's announcements. Mr. Alan Kind, it is with sadness that I report the death of former county councillor Mr. Alan Kind. Mr. Kind was a member of the county council from 1991 to 2001 and represented the South Wigan electoral division. He served as chairman in 1997 to 1998 and was cabinet lead member for building a healthier community and improving economic wellbeing for two consecutive years, from 1999 to 2001. He also served on a number of committees, including the resources committee, the planning and recreation committee, and the economic development and employment committee. Just a personal footnote, I never knew Alan, but I was elected, in fact, in 2001, so just after, obviously, Alan had left. And I remember the laptop that I was provided with had on the back of it a sticker, it was Alan Kind's before I got here. So I thought that was quite an interesting point. I invite the council there to stand in silent tribute to the memory of Mr. Kind. Thank you very much. Falklands War Remembrance. On Tuesday 14th of June at three o'clock, I hosted a small remembrance service at Stand Easy to commemorate the ending of the Falklands War in 1982. The timing of the event was to coincide with the act of remembrance which took place at the 1982 cemetery in Port Stanley, 11 o'clock local time. At the service, we were joined by a group of former paras who were marching from Rotherham to London in tribute to fallen Falklands War heroes. In fact, the chairman, the vice-chairman and I actually both went and had quite an interesting discussion with them, chat. Armed Forces Week. On Monday the 20th of June, to mark the start of Armed Forces Week, Darren Watret, who is currently employed as an operation manager in the Environment and Transport Department, raised the Armed Forces Day flag at a ceremony at Stand Easy. Darren, who served in the army for 25 years and was posted all around the world, including tours in Germany, Northern Ireland, Kuwait, Bosnia, Iraq, and Afghanistan. And on Saturday the 25th of June, together with the Lord Lieutenant and Lord Mayor of Leicester, I attended Armed Forces Day in Leicester City. The parade was made up of service personnel, veterans, and cadets marching through the streets of Leicester. Following the parade, there was an outside drumhead service in Green Dragon Square. It was a very moving occasion. Green plaque. Last month, I had the honour of unveiling a green plaque in honour of Fanny Deacon, who was at the time the first woman in Britain to qualify to register as a pharmacist. Fanny first registered as chemist and druggist with the Pharmaceutical Society in 1869, but as a woman, she was not allowed to become a member until 1879. It was a great honour to unveil the plaque in Fletney. She actually was born and raised in Kibworth Beach, Manchester. Summer Reception. I'll be hosting my summer reception at Beaumana Hall on Thursday 28th of July at 6:30pm. All members will have received their invites, so I do hope you'll all be able to join us. County Service. We'd hoped to get this planned this week, but sadly, one of the people who was due to join us was poorly with Covid, so at the moment, I have to say what I do now. I'll be hosting a county service later in the year. I was going to give you the date, and all members will have received an invitation in due course. It's likely to be, I think, probably October now, because of all the planning and so on that has to take place. And finally, I announced when I was elected that I would hope that the role of county council chairman could have some kind of social media. Something on the board, anyway. I'm glad to know that if you look now on Twitter at @ChairmanLCC, it is now up and live, and there is a Facebook link as well. So please do follow and join in. I'm not actually driving it, it's been driven by officers, but obviously, I end up in most of the photographs. That's the way it goes. Agenda item number two, the minutes. I move that the minutes of the meeting that the council held on the 18th of May 2022, copies of which have been circulated to members, be taken as read, confirmed, and signed. Mr. Harrison, will you second?
I will indeed, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I second.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Agenda item three, declarations of interest. I invite members who wish to do so to make a declaration of interest in respect of any items on the agenda for this meeting. Are there any such declarations? Pacing round, I see no hands being raised. Okay, thank you. Agenda item number four, questions asked understanding order seven, one, two, and five. The questions and replies set out in the order paper will be taken as read and entered into the minutes. I have received notice of supplementary questions, and now call upon the relevant members to put them. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Chairman. I've got questions on one, three, and four. I'll be as brief as can. The first one's about priority, and with any strategy, priority is absolutely central. And I ask for clarification of what exactly was meant, because I find it difficult to understand. I've been given five paragraphs, hoping for simplification. The first paragraph says that the priority is to prevent emissions directly at source. And the final one says the priority should be the greatest impact on carbon emissions. They're two completely different prioritisations, and I wondered if you can't clarify this now, whether it could be clarified early in the draft document, because it's not understandable.
Mr. Payne?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm not quite sure the point that Max is making, but I'll ask officers to respond to him and contact him about the nuance that he raises. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. On question three, Chairman, this is a question asking what he and members might do to set a good example. And I was referred to page 61. I was a bit disappointed that the lead member didn't have an example to give us. But if you go to page 61, the examples would be suitable for a child. But for a member, let alone a lead member, I think we really want some strong examples, and I wondered if he could perhaps give further thought to a grand gesture of some sort which would tell people how important this strategy is going to be.
Well, I'm very happy to tell council the type of things that I'm personally doing to contribute to a reduction in climate change, but I have been on Facebook Live on behalf of the county council, and I've done numerous radio interviews, et cetera, about this. So I feel like I am putting myself out there and trying to lead. The strategy is very clear about measures generally people can take, but on a personal level, I walk more, I use the car less, I am conscious about my energy consumption at home, and I turn the temperature down, I seek to wash my clothes at a suitable temperature. And I think one of the best things people can do is consider planting a tree, because they sequester carbon. Hopefully, that's enough for you, Max.
That's absolutely fantastic, and I look forward to hearing much more about these real things, real things. So I'll leave question four aside. Thank you.
Thanks, Max. And, the right page, Mr. Galton?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Thank the leader for his answer. Note that he's going to have a meeting with MPs. Given the seriousness of the situation, what is the key message he's going to be giving the MPs? And again, given it so serious, would he agree to report back to members on the outcome of that meeting by way of some sort of MIS or perhaps coming to the next scrutiny commission?
Mr. Rushton?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman, thank you, Simon. So obviously, we are meeting the MPs, two are scheduled, 14th and 15th, I think, of July, in the afternoon. The main message is the frightening financial predicament which we're in, and when I get to my position statement, I emphasise it, Lee will tell you, that in the 25 years I've been here, I've never ever seen the finances looking so poor, and having to instruct officers to start making ideas for substantial cuts or savings which are going to have to be introduced after the summer. These are the sorts of messages I need to tell them, that we are not joking, things are dire here. As you know, Simon, 85% of our budget is statutory. It's a worry for me that the 15% that isn't statutory is where we may, where we will have to make the savings. So I will certainly be telling them that. Deborah will be joining me as well, so we get a different nuance to my sometimes forthright opinions of our finances, and of course, I'll report back to you, Simon, or say to Michael as Liberal leader and Amanda as Labour leader. Thank you.
Max, your thing is still on. Thanks very much, thanks. Agenda item number five, to receive position statements from members of the cabinet, and I understand the leader. So I now invite the leader to make his position statement, and when the leader has finished his statement, I'll invite Mr. Mulaney and then Mrs. Hack as leaders of opposition to speak first. If you wish to speak, then after them, please raise your hand, and I'll then call you to speak in normal. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. So obviously, it's a long position statement, and I promised Stuart earlier on before the meeting, and lots of my members, I don't intend to read it out. But obviously, the first bit on the MTFS, I've just replied to Simon about it, and the expression frightening is one that isn't used lightly whilst well-reported, because times are very, 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 very dire for us. We get a reply back from a government minister, which I sent in January, only replied today, saying that they've given us £30 million, which even in itself isn't the truth. £15 million of it was what we all voted for in increased council tax this April, and even that £30 million nowhere near covers the costs which we're experiencing. And to be fair to the administration and to officers, when we did the budget, we were looking at 3%, 4% inflation. Nobody in their right mind would have thought inflation would be approaching 10%, 11%. Nobody in their right mind would have seen what was happening in Ukraine and the costs of fuel. And now we've got this cost of living crisis as well, because as you all know, if you go to the store, you just notice your shopping bill is up, and some people aren't in a financial situation where they can afford that extra 5%, 10% on their food. So we are in the same position as members of the public. In fact, in some areas, we're worse, because we've obviously got more social care for adults and children, SEM is out of control. So it is frightening. We will, Lee has instructed, he started his star chambers with the spending department, and we will come back in September. I think we're going to have to come in September with some fairly tough decisions, because we cannot and will not be a North Hamter. So, second paragraph is about the cost of living, obviously, I'm not going to repeat it. Amanda raised it previously, we are taking it seriously, we are putting county council money where our mouth is, and we are doing the best we can with the very limited resources that we've got. On the Ukrainian guests, obviously, we've done a very, very good job with Ukrainian guests, and I want to place on record and name-check a couple of people who've worked exceedingly hard for us in this area, and that is Zaffa and Gurgit, who have done incredible amounts of work. We are going to have to put some extra resource, as they call it, into that department to make sure that we do our absolute utmost with the Ukrainian guests. It goes on to say about the transport support, which we're proud to do, the same about the £200 payment, and we want to thank schools for the work they have done in accommodating the children. And we're also going to write to the members of parliament on a side and a half of A4 to try and tell them what we're doing in pretty succinct terms, because a lot of the problems which Gurgit and Zaffa are encountering is the sheer amount of correspondence we're getting from members of parliament asking questions and expecting us to have a Ukrainian guest arrive on a Monday, house them by Tuesday, pop the kid into school by Wednesday, give them £350 by Thursday, and it just does not work like that. And then, to compound the problems we've got, the government has now announced we've got to take unaccompanied Ukrainian guests. Now, that causes us all manner of, not problems, but all manner of paperwork and things we have to go through to make sure that children who arrive are in the correct families or correct locations, so the checks need to be done, as you would do if you were doing a child for adoption. So it's not as simple. It will cause Deborah's department time and effort, we will do our best with it, but we need to explain to the members of parliament again that it's not quite as simple as announcing something on a Friday, and we can start taking children on a Monday. On the electric charging vehicle points, okay, we're bidding, we'll get to 100 across the county if we're successful, I think we will be successful, but that is only really scratching the surface. If you notice from the sales of electric vehicles now, 20% of new cars at present being bought are fully electric, and it's okay for people like me who've got an electric car, my son who's got an electric car, because you can charge it on your drive, but there are a lot of people who aren't in a position where they can charge on the drive, so they will in the future rely on charging, say, on lamp posts or whatever, or in the street or whatever. So this is only a start really here of putting in the infrastructure that will be required moving forward to enable us all to drive electric and be less polluting. On the corn solar farm, we should be really, really proud of that. It's got its planning permission, okay, it costs us £6 million to build, that goes into the corporate asset investment fund, but the two good things that it doesn't mention in the sentence here is it not only contributes massively to our net zero agenda, so we all understand we're not promising to be absolute zero, promising to be net zero, so it contributes to the net zero agenda, but it also contributes around £600,000 of revenue to this council. So every £100,000 odd, well, £600,000 is something which we don't have to raise through council tax, which can go towards subsidising regular services. On Pride Week, as you know, we are proud to be an LGBTQ authority, we do our best with all relationships with all people, we're not judgmental, anybody can be what they like when they like, as long as they do the job, that is, and we're proud of that. And I just want to mention, obviously, the terrorist attack where two people were killed and 20 injured, is something that needs to remind us that these sort of things are still ongoing in the world in which we live, even today. Now, the last one, not the last one, the Queen's Award for voluntary services, you would automatically normally think that that would be raised by the civic head here, Kevin, and by the civic mayor in the city. But the chief's had works with Mike Capor, you all know Mike Capor, he's a really, really good Lord Lieutenant, and I want to help him. So what he's asked me to do is to mention this here as the political lead, and SPS will mention it in the city as the political lead. So although quite a few voluntary service things got awards through Mike, we are behind the curve in terms of the amount of people coming forward. So the idea of me mentioning it here too is to ask you all, as senior politicians, obviously they'll be the MPs, but senior politicians in the county, to have a quick look throughout your division and try and suggest people who could get these awards. There are a lot of deserving charities out there which aren't receiving the awards, not because they're not deserving, because nobody's nominating them. So if you can have a good look around and think and get some nominations in, and I did have a member of my own group, John, yesterday, say that sometimes groups get nominated, and then they get no feedback about why they didn't succeed. And I asked Pam and David Briscam to approach you, so if we do get members of help with the charities to apply and they don't get an award, some feedback from you or Mike Capor would be helpful, so when they find some more in the future, they know which boxes to tick, because sometimes, even though they're good charities, sometimes it is about ticking boxes. But let's see if we can get some more coming forward this financial year. On the census, nothing much more to add apart from the fact we've already grown 9%. We're now projected to grow another 20%, which are pretty daunting numbers again for us with the amount of resources we've got. But if you live here, like I do, you can understand why people want to come here, you know, it's a great location, generally, the signs, the roads, the schools are good, the health service, you know, we all complain about it, but it's still pretty good. So we need to prepare for the extra 20% which is coming along. And also, there's a little, on the screen outside, a little video that myself and Deborah did, talking to people about the growth in the county. And the one that was done out here is done by Katie, and that in our own PR department for like, I don't know, £100. The one which the LEP commissioned, which was nowhere near as good in my view, it cost £70,000. So you have a look at that and see, and then have a look at the LEP one and see which one's the better, and I think ours is. With that term, I'll sit down and take any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rushton. I agree, actually, I've been watching the video, the video is actually superb, excellent. Mr. Mulaney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the leader for his statement. So in terms of the medium-term financial strategy, obviously, it's incredibly concerning the situation that we are in at the moment, and the risk to public services locally that people are likely to face because of it, and the possibility of increased council tax as well during this cost of living crisis, which is going to hit people even more harder. In terms of the funding, the issue still continues to be that we are the worst-funded county in the country, and we've still failed to deliver anything from the government on this. And the reality is, we have all Conservative MPs, and they have failed to use their leverage to get the extra money that our area needs. I mean, we remember back in 2017 when there was the hung parliament, the DUP took advantage of the situation to demand money for their area. Our MPs could have made similar efforts when the government had no majority, and where they could have been really strongly put in the case for more money for our area. And we saw it again recently when the MP for the Isle of Wight wrote that he had voted in favour of Mr. Johnson in return for a review of funding for the Isle of Wight council. Now, a number of our MPs voted in favour of Mr. Johnson, not all of them, but none of them failed to get a similar commitment from him in terms of looking at the funding for Leicestershire, when that could have been an opportunity to have had some leverage. So people are going to continue to miss out. And in terms of inflation, inflation was rising at the beginning of this year, and I do recall saying at Scrutiny Commission, and I think Mr. Galton did as well, that some of the predictions that inflation would come back down again next year did seem rather too optimistic, given that we're already seeing for the first time in 30 years inflation going up, and therefore, was it really likely that inflation would go back down again to a low level next year? So I think that in terms of inflation, there were signs then, at the beginning of this year, that inflation was a risk in terms of the finances of the council. And in terms of specific services, for example, we mentioned in this statement the importance of helping people through the cost of living crisis and the importance of dealing with the climate crisis. And one of the ways of obviously doing that is encouraging people to use public transport. Through my area, there is a subsidised service, the 159 bus between Hinkley and Colville that stops in Hinkley-de-Montfort, but also goes through various villages in the borough and to Colville. Can we guarantee that services such as that will continue to be subsidised in future, given the importance of encouraging people to use public transport, given how expensive fuel is, and given how we're trying to deal with the climate crisis? So there is a serious problem with the funding, and all I can say is I hope that we can have some success with getting the Conservative MPs to agree to put more pressure on the government to deliver funding, but sadly, up until now, we're aware that they have not managed to get that fair funding that our area needs. In terms of the census, we're talking about a 20% increase over the next 20 years, that's going to put huge pressure also on infrastructure. It's not just the county council that's the worst-funded, but also services such as the police, the fire service, education, health services, we see below-average investment in Leicestershire, and therefore, it's a worry if we're going to have a big increase in population, whether the essential public services can deal with that. I agree with the leader that we should encourage people to put them forward for the Queen's Award for voluntary services. I agree with his statements on the pride situation and the Ukrainian situation as well, in terms of the help that guests have been given, and I would share with him his praise for the particular officers who have done a lot of work on that. I would say that on the bus services issue, if we can look at whether the 65 is enough to cover fully a monthly bus pass, there were some people who raised concerns whether it is, and whether we can look at maybe extending that scheme beyond one month for a longer period of time, if possible, because obviously, people are going to need transport going forward over some months. So on that issue, I will leave it, but really just say, on the MTFS, he himself has already said that it's a very worrying, frightening situation regarding the finances of the county council, and it really is time for the Conservative government and Conservative MPs to start delivering for Leicestershire, because it's completely unfair that our area continues to miss out and residents suffer because of it.
Thank you. Mrs. Hack?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Leah, for your update. Obviously, the impact of inflation and the impact on our budget and our services is something that's of real worry to all of us here. The services we provide to our communities are actually the key things that we get involved in, and knowing that we have two options, cut the service, grow the budget, that's it, that's all we've got, that's all the wriggle room we have. And the theme, the time I've been a councillor, is for us to receive less and less support from government. I think the focus and our programme to secure fair funding, if we could have an update on that, that'd be useful, but it's something that Leicestershire's still waiting for. The question, though, is timing. And as such, timing and conditions never seem to be right for Leicestershire, and consistency we need from government certainly isn't happening at the moment as they're faltering around our ears. The questions about financing, again, will have to now start with the new Chancellor. We do not, we cannot continue to have this level of uncertainty. The uncertainty is already there, inflation is... The uncertainty is already there, inflation is on the rise, uncertainty is already there with war happening in Europe. And I think that those are the things that will start to really compound the impact. The pressure of inflation, though, obviously is something we face, and also impacts the cost of living, and the measures that are outlined in the paper that the leader touched on were really, have been really helpful, I'm sure, to lots of people in Leicestershire, but it feels very much as if we're going to just tip, it will be the tip of the iceberg, and there'll be many, many people struggling, and that's something that, again, provides us with more challenges, because those families are going to start to need our support, those older people are going to start to need our support in an issue of our budget. I think our response to Ukraine really does show local government its best. Our colleagues, the people who do the work on the ground, have done a tremendous piece of work. But it's also shown the kindness of the people in Leicestershire, helping Ukrainians to settle, and that genuinely has been the situation. And certainly, the Ukrainian children of attending my children's school have been welcomed with open arms, and that's the best of us. And I think that that's something that should be applauded and congratulated. I'm really, was really pleased to see that the authorities play in its part to provide some transport support for Ukrainian guests in Leicestershire. However, it does, it did really show me, and it was interesting hearing from members from across the county, just what little services we have in terms of bus transport and the challenges that will pose for us in terms of climate emergency. I think when we talk about the best of people, obviously the Queen's Award for Voluntary Service, it actually also shows the best of what we can do, the groups do for volunteering, and of course, we will do what we can to try and encourage people to put themselves forward. Really excited, the Pride event in Leicester Victoria Park is always great fun, you're all more than welcome to come and visit the Labour Stand, it's a great team of people and a great, great atmosphere, so you obviously will all be welcome.
Thanks, Mrs Hack. Mrs Taylor?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I just want to touch on a couple of points in the leader's position statement. I'd just like to echo the words of the leader about the support that we've put forward for this council to help our most vulnerable residents. I think we're all aware of that the cost of our weekly food shopping is rising, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to make sure people were aware of their entitlement to free school meals. So families with children in foundation classes, years one and two, are entitled to the universal food free school meals, and schoolchildrens in years three above are entitled to free school meals if their family are in seats of certain benefits. So I just want to make sure people are claiming that, because our stats are showing that there's lots of children that are entitled to the free school meals in the earlier years, and also people with the certain benefits are not claiming the freedom. And that can save some money out of your weekly food budget, so I would urge people and members here to make sure they share that around with their residents, to make sure that people are taking up their free entitlement, because I think it's more important than ever now that we help our residents as much as we can. So I think awareness and communication are one of those key things that we can do as members here. I just want to touch on the Ukrainian guests, that sits under my portfolio, so I'm fully involved in the support that we're giving to our Ukrainian guests, and I will echo the leader's words of thanks for all the hard work for our staff, they did pick it up alongside their own jobs, so they have all been working extremely hard to make sure that we're supporting our Ukrainian guests as much as we can. I thought you'd be interested in just some figures, Mr Chairman, so we currently have one hundred and eleven Ukrainian children in our county schools, but it does take approximately three to four weeks for us to secure those school places for those children once they're put into the admission service. And we have put more resources into our mission service, but they are really stretched at the moment. So we are working hard as we can, but there are some delays in getting children, and that's not necessarily just our team, but it's working with schools, and I must also thank the school leaders for working really well with us. But we can't just, we have to go into negotiations with schools to see where they're going to put these children, where they can fit them into their schools. So there is a bit of negotiation with the school and our mission service, so it's not a straightforward process. So I would hope that you just bear with me, but I for one, the best place for children, for their welfare, their safeguarding, and for their future development is for them to be in school, so it's one of our top priorities, but please just bear with us, it's not an overnight task. And the leader touched on our recently advice by central government that we'll be taking unaccompanied children, while we welcome that, it will put a lot of pressure on the resources that we have already really stretched in the children and families department. So those children will be coming over, but they'll be coming to named sponsors, so it will be people that are known to the parents back in Ukraine that will be sending their children over. But with that, that brings a lot of other concerns, because we will have to check that those children are safe, and safeguarding is one of our key priorities for children coming over, so it will put a lot of pressure on us. The funding's only for one year at the moment, so we are constantly pushing back to the DFE to say, you know, what further, we need to know the answer sooner rather than later, because we can't have children here and not be funded for us, because, as we've just heard, our budgets are stretched, but we want to do all we can to support our Ukrainian guests and have them into the community with us. Just touching on the Queen's Award for Voluntary Service, so the leader said about what's available, but I think, just want to highlight that the Lord Lieutenant did something special for the Queen's Platinum Jubilee, so he gave out seventy awards to recognise the seventy years that the majority of the Queen's been on the throne. So he gave awards out to schools, businesses, voluntary organisations, and community groups across Leicester and Leicestershire for their outstanding efforts to local communities. So I was actually delighted to hear that one of our councillors received an award for his work with the Glenfold Community Food Hub, so well done to Mr Chapman, I know he's here somewhere. And I was also really pleased to hear that Braggot Park Trust volunteers also won a reward. So I'm obviously trustee of Braggot Park, it's in my division, so I'm very precious of Braggot Park, and we have hundreds of volunteers that work really, really good hours at Braggot to keep it in an excellent condition for us all to enjoy. So I was really pleased to see that all those volunteers have been given an award by the Lord Lieutenant as well. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs Taylor. Mrs Postle?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to make some comments about the cost of living statement that the leader has made. I'd just like to inform you that the five hundred thousand voluntary sector funding has enabled the Citizens Advice Bureau to support over fourteen thousand residents with the debt issues, dealing with over five million pounds' worth of total debt. And they've secured nearly eight million pounds in additional income for local households through access to benefits and dealing with the debt. And the signposting and community support service, so people who have got to move into new dwellings or something like that, we're dealing with, are reused, we provide reused graded furniture and electrical goods to help people to move out of temporary accommodation, over a thousand people have been supported with that scheme. And the Trussell Trust Food Banks have continued to meet the high demand of food parcels, and they have actually distributed from, it has increased from seventeen thousand to twenty-nine thousand seven hundred. And I'm sure you think that that's a really remarkable thing that these voluntary people have managed to do. And just to say that we will continue to assist our residents as much as we possibly can in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Postle. Mr Brecon?
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to touch on a couple of pieces from the leader's statement. He mentioned corn, corn's in total, it's a forty-year scheme, so it'll give us back twenty-four million, so really good investment, six million upfront, twenty-four million back at the end of the forty-year scheme, it either reverts back to farming land, or it can obviously be extended in a way, so that's really good use of county council money, as the leader's said, it saves us putting that on the council tax demands. I think the leader's covered figures, so I just want to give you a couple of headlines. And the headlines to me, we used to be the lowest-funded county, the good news is, if there is a need, that we're not now the lowest-funded county, we're number three in the bottom of the league. So there is some good news, but obviously tongue in cheek, but we are, we are one of the lowest-funded, twenty lowest-funded, so I think at the moment we're likely to remain so in that case. I think really there's a little prospect of fair funding in the short term. We have given the government a solution, Chris Tambini's report that he did with a three hundred million pound investment to provide the lowest-funded twenty councils and local authorities with lifelines until a fairer funding mechanism is in place, and that is what we're looking for. So we are still going to push on that. Inflation really is our big problem, every council in this country set their budgets back in February, and when we did it, we set it as a balanced budget, so we knew what council tax we needed, we knew what income we'd got other than council tax, but of course, inflation's come along, and that has really been the big hit for all of us. Interestingly enough, we were led by the Bank of England on inflation rates as to what we expected to happen, but of course, they got that horrendously wrong, so like every other authority, we are the same on that. We do believe that the governments are unlikely at this point to make the shortfall, and that's why we're now looking at what we set in February for the budget, from revenue and also on capital. It will be a difficult process this year, I think we accept that, but I think we have to be, accept the challenge, we've got a good track record, yeah, we have saved over two hundred and thirty million since 2010 as an authority. I think because of that, we've been ahead of the game, yeah, we aren't a Northampton, we're not a Nottingham, and I think because of that, we have already made those efficiency savings. What we now need to do is look at possibly some harder decisions that we need to make as members. I firmly believe that those that react first will manage the best, and that's why we are doing the programme that we're doing, and obviously as soon as we can report back to members, we will. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Brecon. Mr Hunt?
Just a couple of comments, one on the Corn Solar Fund, I think this is a great example of how well the CAIF fund can work, investing locally for a good return. I think six hundred thousand a year was reported, I think, as the return on investment. And what a good thing it would be if we could look at onshore turbines, wind turbines, which would be another source of green investment. It's a shame to me that we're investing now through a management company at distance. And I'd just like to ask the question whether the CAIF fund will be able to be sustained investment in the future in view of the report that's been given just this last week or two. And the other point was on the census fund, the census figures. Census figures are not just important for telling us how many people live where, but they underpin a whole lot of other statistics that we use, index of multiple deprivation, that's one, but many others. So it's important that they are correct and consistent. And I've talked to Richard Wilding about this, who's the person who produces them, but Charnwood's figure was actually down on the last year by about four and a half thousand, that's almost as many people who live in Roethly. So something's amiss there, but there will be a reason, and whatever that reason is, it will be very important because of the knock-on effect that the census has on all we do. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr Hunt. Mr Parton?
Yeah, can we call him again?
Mr Parton?
No, it's Chair, is it this one?
Yeah.
I'm always happy to speak, Mr Chairman, but I didn't put my hand.
What would you like me to talk about? Give me a subject, Mr Chairman.
Couldn't read. I'm struggling to read, that's the trouble. Mr Payne, sorry.
I can see the confusion there, Mr Chairman.
Very disappointed.
Likewise, just to follow on from Max, I want to talk about the Corn Solar Farm and the electric charging points. Obviously, as lead member for the Environment and Green Agenda, one of the tasks that I've been set and the team have been set is to try and embed at the core of business here in Leicestershire County Council, the environment agenda. And I'm extremely proud and seeing messages come through in all departments now, linking to the net zero agenda, and that's a credit to Johnson at the Chief Execs Team and the wider environment team for making that happen. And we've got a long way to go, but internally, corporately, I think we're doing rather well. And a good example is this Corn Solar Farm, because we have the property department under the resources department here at County Hall, that have achieved planning consent for this solar farm, and from an environment perspective, it's going to create over nine thousand megawatts of energy, which is the equivalent power to heat three thousand homes, I believe. But more importantly, it will save carbon. Although that will reduce as the national grid gets greener year on year, it will save about eighteen hundred tonnes of carbon in the first year, so that's not to be sniffed at and is very welcome. Similarly, with the electric charging points, obviously we're working with four, five other authorities and Midlands Connect, and I do hope that we're not passed by by Midlands Connect in their endeavours here, because I can see across the county, the district councils installing charging points in the car parks, the off-street car parks, et cetera, but it's imperative, as the supply of electric vehicles increases, that we consider how we can provide charging points on public highways, and this bid will help us do that. And again, it comes from the Transport Department, led by Ozzy O'Shea. So it just goes to show that the environment agenda is stretching into everything we do here at County Hall, and I think it's important to recognise here in the chamber that, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr Bray?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I wanted to raise the electric vehicle charging points. My division is a division where there's a lot of flats and there's a lot of terraced houses, so having public charging points is very important as we move forward to the electrical, electric vehicle becomes more and more popular. I know the district council, where my division sits, is doing quite a bit of work on this, and I'm sure that it would be very sensible, I don't know what plans the county council have got to link up with the district councils to sort of avoid repetition, but I'm sure Hinkley-Boswell Council and other councils will be very happy to work with officers to make sure that as the district work complements the county council work, and we can see more and more of these things put in, which are very important. I would just say on the financial situation, I thank the leader for his candour and his honesty about the situation that we face, and clearly, as proposals come forward, the opposition groups will have a lot more to say on some of the proposals coming forward. Clearly, the priority has got to be to protect the most vulnerable and most needy in society and in our county, and that's why, you know, I'm sure we'll all be united in doing that, but we probably have different ideas and have the best ways of doing that, but that's politics and that's democracy. I think, what I would say, and I'll just back up what Mr Mulaney said, you know, as a politics graduate, I'm obviously watching clearly what's going on in Westminster as we speak at the moment, and the drama that's playing out, although I have to say it's more like a scene out of Michael Dobbs' House of Cards than my political history lectures, but what I do know from both is that as the king falls, there'll be people around jockeying for position, and now is the time that we, that our MPs will have the most influence on some of these people as things go forward. And what I would say is, is that, you know, I'm pleased that the leader's got these meetings, we need to have these meetings with our MPs, but then we need to spell out very clearly the consequences for our residents and for their political careers if we continue on this race to the bottom of county council and local authority funding Leicestershire.
Thank you, Mr Bray. Mr Beer?
Cheers, thank you, Mr Chairman. It's nice to hear an honest opinion from a Conservative leader, thank you, Nick, you've always been that for Leicestershire. What I was going to say is, though, is charging points, I've always banged on about it, I did it at the last meeting, and it's welcome that we've got a million pounds for a hundred charging points. That won't be even a drop in the ocean in the East, let alone everywhere else in the county. And I think we have to come up with a plan that delivers with speed and more, and I think Nick mentioned twenty per cent of all new car sales are electric now, and that's this year, imagine next year, the year after, and the year after that. I mean, by the time we get to 2025 and we're standing for reconnection, people are asking, well, actually, where's the Shawshot Centre? But no, where's our charging points? So, you know, it's one of those where the goalposts are shifting. On the medium-term financial strategy, I did raise this at our scrutiny panel, our scrutiny group, and I was saying actually, you know, inflation's going to be massive, and I was given assurances that they have a contingency fund in the budget to deal with inflation. But lo and behold, three months later, after the budget, we get this to say that actually it's worse than we thought, and we've got to slash and burn more. And I hate to be the one to break it to you, but inflation was five and a half, six per cent in February when we were setting the budget, with fuel prices increasing by fifty per cent. Russia had already invaded Ukraine in February. It didn't take a rocket science to think, actually, inflation's going to go much, 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 much higher, and we're at nine point one per cent now. They say it's going to peak at eleven per cent, but they said it was going to peak at eight per cent back then, so who knows? But we're not in a good situation, but we can't cut more, you know, we've been cutting because of austerity for the last twelve years. How much more is there to cut in Leicestershire before you get to the bone? And the bone's going to hurt. So tough choices ahead, and that's something I don't envy Nick and his cabinet, because they're the ones that are going to have to make it. We'll be here on this side scrutinising it, but you're the ones that are going to be making it. And wherever the cuts fall... Wherever the cuts fall, or more cuts fall, is going to hurt. Finally, I want to look at the cost of living, and I think it goes over the MTFS as well. As not a rocket scientist, I think that a lot of people in Leicestershire East and elsewhere in Leicestershire are suffering. Even I have to look at what I'm spending and what kind of shopping I do, because my gas and electricity bill has tripled nearly, and my water bill's gone up, everything's gone up. To be fair, my commute to work has gone up, my pay hasn't gone up, unfortunately. So if I'm thinking, imagine those on 20,000, 30,000 or less, national insurance, everybody's muted. The ban's gone up today and there'll be 30 pounds extra a month. But that's not even a drop in the ocean. So I welcome, and I saw Deborah Taylor's article in Leicestershire Matters, and I thought that really was a good article, because people out there don't see the politics, they just see, they want help. And the fact that we're spending seven million pounds helping people in Leicestershire is better than not helping at all. And I'm sure there's some councils in the country who aren't spending anywhere near that. And I spoke to Deborah and I thought that was a really good article to be on the headline page, because people won't read the Labour Rose or whatever the Conservative one is, but they will read Leicestershire Matters. They will read Leicestershire Matters. And I think if we use that correctly, it is a tool. But I think what we should do as well is have a digital version, where it goes to people's inboxes, there can be links to wherever they can, to wherever they can apply for these funds, and that'd be a brilliant thing. And if there is apologies, I didn't know about it. But thank you, that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Mr Beer. Mr Bill.
Thank you, Chairman. We've heard a lot this afternoon about the good work which is being done by members and officers and members of the public through this current financial crisis. But I would just like to bring us back, if I may, to the situation we find ourselves in here, because I think it's really, this really should be the main thrust of our thinking this afternoon and from now on. I did see the letter which was sent to the MPs, and it was serious, and it was far more serious, actually, than the statement we've seen this afternoon. And I think it's important that we ensure that each of the MPs fully understands the problems that we face here. And I think that, I think I would like to see that both the letter which was sent to the MPs and the individual replies that we've had back, so that we can all see exactly, exactly how they're facing up to this current crisis. And it's a crisis which is not just a crisis for this County Council, it's really a crisis for the people we represent, because of all the public services that they depend upon and probably don't even realise that it's the County Council that is supplying them. It's going to come as a shock when the services start to be reduced. So I think it's up to us, it's up to us to do what we can to influence those who are in a position to help. And if I may, Chairman, it wasn't always like this, if I may say so. Those of us with long memories will know that, starting with the 1980s, that really was a golden time for this County Council and this county. It was a time of great advance. There was massive capital investment going on across the whole area. We were building roads, we were building railways, we were building airports, and it went on and on. And in the arts, this art and education, this county had a reputation nationwide, if not international wide, in terms of, in terms of what it was building up for the future. Not long, not long before I came here, this place was built. And it was a, I think it was built as an example of what the future was going to look like. And we acquired Bow Manor. All kinds of, all kinds of huge advances were made, advances that we would never think of in terms of now. And it all came to an end, not through anything which was anything to do with the members here and all those members and officers that put so much into it. But it came to an end during the 90s, when it was decided, oh, let's change everything, let's throw everything up in the air, let's rip the heart out of the county, let's take Rutland apart, let's just pull it all apart and just see what happens. And of course, it has never been properly funded ever since that day. There was no, there was no real crisis up to that point. This was a self-sufficient county, which of course, we had help from the government, government of the day. But there was nothing, there wasn't that sense of pending gloom and doom that we have now. And somehow, we want to, we need to remind our friends in government that this was once a great county, and it can be again if we actually get the funding that's really deserved by ourselves and the people we represent. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Bill. Mr Welsh.
Thank you, Chairman. Lee, in his statement, talked about the pressure of inflation being one of the worst things. I wonder whether the leader can just give members a flavour of what 1% inflationary rise in the economy costs this council?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So I would like to, on behalf of residents of Market Harborough West and Foxton, like to thank the leader for his position statement, particularly the comments about Ukrainian refugees, because Market Harborough, as members will know, is an area where we are currently, residents are hosting quite a large number of refugees, and that is putting a lot of pressure on local services. So we're very grateful for the support of the County Council and county in ironing out the glitches that there have been and continue to be in one or two aspects of things. But, you know, it's getting there and it's really making a big difference. The one point, one question I did, a couple of points really I did want to make, and one was about the EV charging points. And great news about how Leicestershire is becoming greener and cleaner with the bid for the EV charging points. And I hope Mr Payne is aware, there is also a very large scheme that I understand Leicestershire districts are also making for a significant volume. I'm just hoping, I'm just wondering if there is coordination between these bids to ensure we're not overlapping and duplicating up on where some of these things are going. Because obviously, in Market Harborough West, we've actually already got a few of these points already. And the other thing is just on, and it's kind of a link here between the MTFS, the growing population, because Market Harborough West has actually a number of significant large-scale developments, and residents in the community are concerned, obviously, naturally, about the comments that the leader's made. And we all understand, the financial position is very severe, but also about to ensure that where there are existing commitments for infrastructure, such as new schools, new roads, that are already part of agreed planning consents, they'll actually, they will actually still happen. Because obviously, if we have got large-scale developments, as I say, it's particularly in Market Harborough West and Foxton, we have that, residents will want to understand that those existing commitments are going to happen, because they are significant parts of the master plans that were agreed to by the relevant local planning authority. And, yeah, and finally, Chairman, I just want to point out that in the support for people on, who are in financial distress, one of the things the lead member overlooked was the support that's offered to people who are unemployed and looking to upskill and earn more money, which is the Work and Skills Programme that the County Council is supporting, and that's making a big difference. Regular sessions are held in the centre of Market Harborough and other parts of the county, I know, but that is another part of what our offer is to people who are on low incomes, to get them upskilled to higher-paid jobs. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr King. And finally, Mr Parton.
I think you actually meant Mr Payne. Yeah. What I've got here, I'm speaking on behalf also of Mrs Radford, but I wanted to provide some context and specific reassurance regarding how the County Council look at how they're trying to make savings whilst maintaining essential, you know, services that we have to legally provide, and to be where we don't have to legally provide, where we actually want to provide. And for context, the three biggest departments each have to attend something called a Star Chamber, and all of the three departments will have been through that. It was Adults and Communities on Monday. And we had to go forensically through this. And it started with the care pathway all the way down to libraries and heritage. And I've been in the Star Chamber before, but never, only virtual ones. So to actually be in one in the Goscombe Room, where you're sat looking into the whites of the eyes of people, to actually see how it works, and it was fascinating, because certainly Mrs Radford and I came away from that knowing that all of the key essential care services were protected. There was no doubt at all, we were completely reassured. And we've got some very skilled staff at the County Council, who are clearly extremely savvy in the world of business and finance and operations. And they're looking through this list and say, well, can we alter this? So actually left that Star Chamber, actually went into it extremely nervous, thinking, what will have to go? Actually left quite reassured, because it's very easy to keep talking in generics about how we protect frontline services, we protect the vulnerable. But when you have to forensically go through a list this long, over a period of hour and a half, and work out how you're going to maintain all these services, and you can find that you can, admittedly with some changes, which won't be easy, it's actually quite reassuring.
Thank you very much, Mr Parton. Thanks, everybody. Mr Rushton.
Chairman, a lot of questions, I'll just try and answer as best I can. First of all, to Mr Bill, I never thought you'd be harking back to the 80s and Margaret Thatcher. Most of my side would agree with you, it would be nice to have Margaret Thatcher back in charge and be back in the 80s. She was a leader we generally respected. On the inflation question, Geoff, so 50p on the National Living Wage costs us £5 million, and then I've got some other stuff here. 1% on pay award is £1.5 million, 1% on contract price inflation is £2 million, 1% on the other pay award is £1.5 million, and 1% on contract price inflation, oh, he's already said that, is £2 million. So if you add those, say 10 times those, those are the sorts of numbers which we're having to deal with. If you want them after the meeting, I'll get you them, Geoff, but they are pretty frightening. To Phil, the big difference we'll have on infrastructure, Phil, going forward, is in the past, we've been able to afford to forward fund your roads and stuff. And I know it's a real problem for district leaders, dealing with the local plans and that. But what will now happen is there will be no forward funding of the infrastructure. It will take place, but it will not take place until we've actually got the money in from developers. So schools and stuff, we're type of stuck with, we can put extensions on schools and all that, but eventually, we have to provide schools. So that will have to be, they will have to be forward funded if needed, but your roads won't. And we've been, obviously, one of the biggest local plans we're dealing with at the moment is Charmwood's, you know, they're a double-sized authority, they've got double size of the infrastructure requirements. And we've had to tell them that forward funding infrastructure, unfortunately, will probably have to cease. On the, Jewel talked about slash and burn. I can promise you, Jewel, that there will be no slash and burn, there'll be no knee-jerk reactions, all savings will be fully costed. And of course, we'll seek to deliver on our manifesto commitment, which we're kind of proud of, which we protect the vulnerable and the young. So there will be tough decisions, but we will do our utmost to honour our manifesto commitment. But that will necessitate, Michael, tough decisions are unfortunately our buses. So you talk about the 159, obviously sacrosanct to you and say Bertie, I think the same one he's got running through Market Bosworth. I've got the 129, it runs from Ashby through to Loughborough. And then that's before you get to the deeply rural. I want to say deeply rural, I mean Market Harborough, I mean Melton Mowbray, where the buses are not so well-used, so the subsidy required is higher per passenger. And I'm afraid all of these will have to be in the melting pot of things which we're going to have to look at to see whether or not we have to make savings there. On the digital Leicestershire Matters, it's already out there, Jewel. So all you need is to get the link, then you can just forward it around. I've seen it. On the working with district councils on electric charging, Blake will make contact with the district councils, although generally ours will be on street, whereas, as far as I'm aware, most of the ones, and the ones I see in Ashby Delazoo are off-street in their own car parks. But Blake contacting, say, your people, Stuart, Hinkley Bosworth, it's no big deal, we'll just endeavour to speak to make sure that we're not putting one right on the street, where you've put one right in the car park, just inside. On CAIF, Max, you're right, we're going to have to look at it. Ideally, we would like to continue investing in CAIF, but unfortunately, the investment into CAIF will be in the same pot that Lee and his team are looking at over the summer to come back with recommendations in the autumn. Onshore wind, now, onshore wind, I know it's now Labour Party policy that you like onshore wind. Conservatives struggle with onshore wind, because politically, it's very, very difficult to get planning permission for them. So historically, where they were on land, they encountered exceedingly heavy weather, because they generally need to be in a rural area, they generally need to be on a hill where you can see them, because that's where the wind is. But I think there will have to be a bit of a change in policy on onshore wind. It'll be a very difficult one for any Conservative minister to deliver, because politically, it is very, very difficult to get it through your local electorate, that they've got to have these turbines there, because it's for the greater, because it's for the greater good. I think I've covered most stuff, just making sure. Michael, I've answered. Amanda on fair funding of buses, well, obviously, same stuff, really. I mean, the problem with the buses, it's going to be the rural areas, not the, not say, like the sort of areas you represent or where Max represents. The buses probably pay there, but in areas like I represent, in Melton Mowbray and Harbour and that, they just do not pay, and they require quite a substantial subsidy. And people say, well, why don't you put on a minibus? Well, unfortunately, the minibus still needs a driver, the driver still needs a holiday, the driver still sometimes is ill, and still people don't, blimey, well, use them. So what we need to encourage people is, don't just depend on us for subsidy, try and use the blessed things, is what I say to a lot of them. But I think I've covered everything there, Chairman. Anything that I haven't, we'll send a note out. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Leader. Right, move on to Agenda Item Six, Report to the Scrutiny Commission. Mr Mullany.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm pleased to present this year's annual scrutiny report, which outlines the excellent breadth of work undertaken by the Scrutiny Commission and the five other overview and scrutiny committees. The key objective of scrutiny is improvement. In Leicestershire, all our scrutiny committees work hard to monitor, examine and question the decisions, actions and performance of the Cabinet, with a view to making improvements wherever possible for the benefit of the council and the people it serves. Leicestershire County Council has always valued the role of scrutiny and its involvement before decisions are taken, giving it power to influence and input into those decisions and helping the council shape policy. It is hoped that this will continue, as it is clear, given the financial difficulties the council is in, that we have discussed, that there are unfortunately likely to be difficult decisions that lie ahead, which need to be given serious consideration. As resources reduce, the importance of scrutiny becomes even greater, as transparency is key for the public to have confidence in the council and the decisions it makes. The annual report sets out some of the key areas our committee will be looking at over the coming year. The council's medium-term financial strategy, which will be considered by all scrutiny committees, will no doubt set the tone for what will follow, as well as the council's net zero-carbon commitments, which will be a key area of focus for the Environment and Climate Change Committee. The commission will be focused on growth and how the council will balance this with an affordable capital programme. The Health Scrutiny Committee will continue to challenge the health service and monitor progress in addressing the huge amounts of backlogs that have arisen due to Covid. The Children and Families Scrutiny Committee will look closely at SEND and the rising pressures it continues to face, which pressures it continues to face, which are going to have a significant impact on the council's finances. And the Adults and Communities Scrutiny Committee will consider the impacts of changes to adult social care arrangements and care home quality, which has been severely affected by the pandemic. So there's huge amounts of important work that will be going ahead over the next year and, and have been undertaken over the last year. And I'd like to end by thanking our partners for their support and involvement in the scrutiny process over the last year, as well as thanking all fellow scrutiny members for the work they do.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm pleased too with all of the good work that has been undertaken by the scrutiny committees over the year. And I think this is a very good report that features all the aspects. I'm most grateful to all of the officers who have supported us through the year, and of course, to councillor Mulaney, who had very big shoes to fill over the last year. But I think we've done extremely well. As Commissioner, Vice Chair, sorry, a role which I've held now for several years, I've always valued the role of scrutiny, and in particularly the part we all play in the decision making process. It's something many of the councils do not really embrace as much, and I think we should be really, really proud of it. I know we had a very tough year, and we will have another tough year ahead, especially with the council's financial position. And I think that as all scrutiny members are very, very much committed to the role, and I must thank you, and to thank them all, for their positive and constructive approach, I think it will stand as a very good stat in the year ahead. And again, let me finish by thanking you all and looking forward to another good year.
Thank you, Mrs Page. One of you too, Mr Hunt.
I'm, I'm the junior member of the three, but now I'm the retired member of, of the three because Amanda will be obviously taking over. But we did have a good time. And what I wanted to say was that I think members on scrutiny often feel that we're the Cinderellas, you know, those who weren't invited to the ball. And, but it is, has the advantage that we don't have the responsibility, but we do have of taking the major decisions, but we do have responsibility to, to, you know, pick and dig down into very serious matters. And I'm pleased to say that during the year, I think this is a decision assisted by the Leader, the Public Relations Department of, of the County Council have agreed to allocate one page or I think one article per edition of Leicestershire Matters to scrutiny. Now, the argument we made, I think, was the right one, that actually, a lot of what we do in scrutiny is not only important, but it's very interesting to the outside public. And I just gave an example earlier of, when we were discussing this, of the figures that came forward on waiting lists in local hospitals. People don't necessarily connect with national statistics, but my God, they really understand and want to know what the waiting lists are like in Leicestershire hospitals. Now, that's, that's the Health Scrutiny Committee, but there are many other interesting items that need to come forward to the public to show the difficulties, the difficulty of the decisions we've got and the information that we've received. So I hope that continues now. I would say it's a difficult ask because, I mean, we all know that Leicestershire Matters is a bit of a fanzine for the Cabinet, isn't it? You know, it, it really does tell you what the Cabinet are up to. You know, every page, you've got their pictures, you know, you've got their quotes, whether they said them or not, you know, they're, they're spot on. And in, in that context, you've got to ask yourself, well, what is Leicestershire Matters? What's its purpose? Its purpose is obviously to advertise what, what, what concerns the Cabinet. But it should go a little bit further than that. And it does do good work in advertising consistently, I have to say, for foster parents, for visiting all the attraction we've got in the county. So I think it needs a complete refresh, in my view, but certainly to include what we do in scrutiny. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Hunt. Yes, I think I'll have to apologise in that case because, of course, the last edition had a photograph of me lighting the beacon up on Beacon Hill. I was, Mrs Taylor was there as well. I went and lit the Taylor, the Taylor, lit the beacon, came back down. And this photographer said, can you please hold this Union Jack on a plastic stick? I'll take a photo. Fine. Of course, the actual photograph, the flag is upside down on the stick. But I didn't know that until the photograph was published. But there you go. Yes, things you have to check for. Mrs Hack, do you want to say something?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Max, for, for undertaking the role of scrutiny Commissioner for, for our group for the last year. I think the report itself really does show the breadth of the work that gets done in scrutiny committees. But actually, one of the things that, that I, I've been able to do this year, and it's the support I've got from colleagues, but also from the Chair of Committee, was presenting a petition into Health Scrutiny. So actually, we, we have really been able to champion residents' cause, things that are concerning our residents through scrutiny committee. And I think it's one of the things that we probably don't do as regularly in scrutiny, but I wanted to, to thank officers for, to put in that forward. And a plug from a petition, you can all still sign it. But I think that, you know, in all seriousness, the ability to put forward questions, whether it comes from members of, of, of the council here, whether it comes from members of the public, or via members of the public to, to us as councillors, it's, it's a really important tool and hopefully will encourage our, our communities to engage with the process. But thank you for the report and I found it really interesting. Thank you.
Thanks, Rosal. Mr Rushton.
Thank you, Chairman. On the behalf of the administration, can I thank you for the work you do? We do value and resource scrutiny appropriately in this County Council, unlike some other authorities. So thanks to obviously Rosita, my scrutiny senior person, Michael for your work, and Max for your work, and of course, to all the other chairmen and members of the scrutiny boards who put in the time. And also thank you to the ones that sub on. And I always think to my side, the ones that sub on do a good job because A, it broadens their outlook and it brings fresh views on each, each scrutiny panel that meets. So thank you for your good work. On Leicestershire Matters, I think it's a pretty good magazine, I think it's pretty well read. I get quite a few emails in about it, obviously as Leader. I'm happy to have a page on scrutiny, Max, I think it works, I think it works well. And if you don't, you just have to let me know because as, as you, as you pointed out, the majority of people that do scrutiny are on, on, on my side. So I want to make sure that they get their voices heard and, and are respected for the work, for the work they do. So thanks to all and look forward to next year because you'll have quite a bit of work to do on this, on this budget stuff, I'm afraid.
Thanks, Mr Rushton. Mr Pollan.
Thank you, Chair. I think the best authorities are those with the strongest scrutiny setups, the ability to analyse what the executive's doing. And the term critical friend is used a lot, and I think sometimes people don't understand what that means, but it really is the ability to, to look into what, what's going on and how can we add value? What can we do to support what the executive and what the council as a whole is doing is, is a really important one. And I think where authorities where that isn't the case, you see they're, they're very much weaker for it. I'd also say that scrutiny is an example of where actually a lot of cross party cooperation is, is really, is really well done. People see obviously national politic, what goes on in the Commons, PMQs, people see the theatre, if you like, sometimes of what we do in this chamber. But actually, most of what we do is, is working really well with colleagues, both on our own side, but also across the chamber. And I'd certainly like to say in the, in the last year that I've been a scrutiny commissioner, I think we, we've worked well with, with colleagues from, from all parties. I'd like to, to add as well, the, the report itself, I think, is really, really well written. It's easy to understand. And again, it's something I'd certainly signpost people to if they don't understand what scrutiny is and what scrutiny does and the value that it adds. To that end, I'd very much like to see it, it, it spread as widely as possible, maybe hard copies in, in public libraries, on, on the internet, through the communications and so forth. So with that, just wanted to make those comments and really just finish off by saying thank you to, to everyone who, who adds their value to, to scrutiny in Leicestershire. I think the, the knowledge that people have, the experience people bring, and the attitude that they, they come to scrutiny with is really positive. And, you know, you compare that to, to what happens in other councils sometimes, and that isn't universally the case. So thank you to everyone that's, that's contributed so much in the last year. As the Leader says, we've got a, a, a difficult year coming up and, and again, we'll need that very much in the next 12 months. And thank you to all the officers that have done so much to, to facilitate scrutiny here in Leicestershire. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr Pollan. Mr Mulaney, you have the right to reply.
Just to thank everybody for their comments on this, and, and thank you to Nick, and also thank you to all the members of the scrutiny commission, especially Rosita, James, Max and Amanda as Commissioners. And also thank you to all the officers for their, their work in helping scrutiny function, including Joanne as well. So thank you to everyone and hopefully we can all support this today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, so we now have basically to vote on this point, that the information contained in the overview and scrutiny annual report, attached as appendix A to this report, all its activities be noted. Everyone happy about that? No one says nay. Thanks. Agenda item therefore number seven, notice of motion. And it's on smoking. Mr Mulaney, you're going to propose that cover.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I hope members can support this motion today, which Cancer Research UK supports. And I thank Mrs Richardson for, for agreeing to second the motion as well. I'm sure all of us sadly have lost relatives and friends through, through cancer, so anything we can do to support trying to deal with the, the preventable causes of, of cancers is, is, is to be supported. Tobacco smoking has thankfully reduced greatly over the years, but it is still something which one in seven of the population of the UK still smokes regularly, and one in eight people here in Leicestershire still smoke regularly. And it is still the largest cause of preventable cancer and deaths in the country. So it continues to be a serious problem. And it also unfortunately worsens health inequalities because there's significantly higher smoking rates in the most deprived communities compared to the, the least deprived communities. Cancer Research UK estimates that there's nearly twice as many smoking attributable cancer cases in the lowest income groups as opposed to the highest income groups. So it's still something which, which contributes towards the inequality in life expectancy that still exists between people from high and low income backgrounds. And one third of households with a smoker in them are below the poverty line. So it continues to unfortunately impact upon people's ability in terms of cost of living and so on, in terms of the, the, the cost of smoking. So I hope that all members can support this today. Cancer Research UK's call for a smoke free fund, which would be a fixed annual charge on the tobacco industry, making the tobacco industry pay for the damage their policies cause, to help fund local tobacco control policies, would be something that would help in the work that, that public health does in order to try and help people to cease smoking or, or stop smoking in the first place and therefore to help reduce the rates of cancer and sadly death that are still attributable to smoking. So I hope everyone can support this, this today and support this campaign from Cancer Research and help continue the, the battle to try and reduce the number of preventable deaths that sadly still occur due to smoking. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr Mulaney. Mrs Richardson, a second.
Thank you, Chair. I'm very happy to support the motion that Mr Mulaney has brought forward. We do know that, well, first of all, I'd like you to note that the prevalence has fallen even further, so it's now 11.5. The difference in smoking rates, as you say, is one of the leading drivers of health inequality, and it's responsible for half the difference in life expectancy between the lowest and highest income groups in England. We have our Quit Ready Smoking Cessation Service, and that's available to all residents in Leicestershire. And we do pay particular attention to our more deprived communities and areas with high smoking prevalence. We recognise, as you have stated, that smoking hits the poorer harder, and we focus our efforts on these areas through a tailored marketing approach. So we work with other health professionals across the board to promote it, as well as to increase engagement and uptake of smoking cessation. We've worked with GP practices in areas of high smoking prevalence. We've sent out bulk text messages to all smokers registered with practices, encouraging them to use the service. We've also provided various workplace health smoking cessation sessions across the county, but particularly targeting employers where there is a high number of routine and manual workers, such as Samworth Brothers, because they have the highest smoking prevalence. The largest number of people setting a quit date with the service at present are people who work in these areas. So we feel we're targeting the right people and the right socio economic groups, and more than half are going on to quit smoking. We're currently working on the LLR Cure Programme. It provides bedside stop smoking support to all inpatients identified as smokers entering the UHL. They're all referred on to the programme and have an opt out basis, on an opt out basis. And they're provided with a 12 week intervention upon discharge from hospital. Work's underway to further roll that out to maternity and mental health inpatient units. We provide stop smoking support to pregnant women and their partners and have good working relationships and collaboration with maternity services. And 50% of women referred going on to quit smoking with Quit Ready Support. We're also working, we've set up a tobacco control alliance partnership with key partners such as UHL LPT, LFRS, ICS, Trading Standards, Environmental Health, other partners, to help deliver on the identified work streams in the Tobacco Control Action Plan. We're also raising awareness and educating people on the dangers of secondary, secondhand smoking. We're working with district partners, housing associations and tenancy associations in Blaby, North West Leicester, Hinkley and Bodworth, with a view to rolling out further districts. We've got training programmes for housing officers in collaboration with tenant, in collaboration with Leicester Fire and Rescue Service, around brief optimistic discussions, secondhand smoking and established referral pathways. And we've conducted surveys to gain the views and understandings of tenants regarding secondhand smoking. We're also working with Trading Standards and Commission Enforcement Officers to investigate illicit tobacco and test purchasing throughout the county on an ongoing basis, and they report to public health on a quarterly basis. As for part two, obviously taxation is not down to us, but we do, I would support the local government being adequately resourced to fulfil their public health duties. And from that, I'd say I second George's motion. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Richardson. Mrs Newton.
Thank you very much, Chair. I would just like to say thank you very much for the motion. And I would like to say that the Labour Group are happy to support and endorse this motion on smoking. And we're pleased also to note that at 12%, Leicestershire have a slightly below average rate in terms of smoking amongst young people especially. But it would be great if we can actually drive these rates down even further. Cancer caused by smoking is one of the most horrendous forms of cancer I've witnessed firsthand. And it does worry me a little bit that even though that we're trying to drive down the rates, we must keep reinforcing that message that smoking kills. And that message needs to be reinforced, especially amongst young people who actually think, who actually get a buzz out of smoking because they think they're being naughty and doing something that they're not supposed to do. So the Labour Group is, will support this motion and thank you for bringing it to the council.
Thank you, Mrs Newton. Mr Meir.
Cheers, thank you, Mr Chairman. I too welcome the motion and will be supporting it as, as Betty has said. But one thing I just want to bring to everyone's attention is actually, smoking is dangerous, but vaping, have you seen how many young people are vaping now? It's, it's off the scale because I, I drop my 12-year-old to school and I see kids in his school, outside school keep vaping. And it surprises me. And obviously, some, some vapes don't have nicotine in, but the majority do and they're flavoured. And it's, it's, it's just smoking in a different form. And that's a danger, isn't it? That we've done all the education through the years on smoking and, and the dangers of smoking, and then comes a new product that's savvy with the youngsters, they see it on TikTok. And before you know it, there's a new generation hooked on nicotine and the dangers that, that brings. And I think this is timed emotion. People might be thinking, with all the things that are happening in the world at the moment, but yeah, this is one of the biggest killers. And I was unfortunate to lose my father when I was 17. He was only 50, 55, I think, so he died prematurely. And he used to chain smoke and that's what killed him in the end. So it's, it's important that we tell people in Leicestershire. And if nothing Covid has taught us is that our public health department in the council works, and it works really well. So let's get the message out and let's get this message out again. Covid has taken a bit of a backseat. It's not gone by all means, but smoking will never take a backseat. It'll keep killing people and it'll keep killing people and it'll keep killing people. And it's our duty as a council, as we, you know, to, to educate people in public health and educate them to danger. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Meir. Mr Mulaney, you have your right to reply.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. So thank you, Mrs Richardson, for, for seconding the motion and for going through the various work that's being done to help on this issue. Thank you, Mrs Newton, for your support and thank you, Mr Meir, for your support and for your own personal experiences, the damage that, that smoking can, can do. So thank you very much for, for everyone who's spoken, supported this today and hopefully everyone can support this motion this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, we'll now take a vote on it. All those who vote for the motion, please, say you're fanned up. I think that's unanimous. That's unanimous. Thank you very much indeed. So that comes to the end of the meeting. Sadly, that's two minutes before, before I was told to end it by. Our next meeting, if you recall in your diaries, is the 28th of September. And I'd just remind you that the 28th of July is the chairman's reception up at Bay Manor, starting at 6:30. Like to see you all there. Thank you.